Well, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:30 on January 7th. Uh, entertain, uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as may be amended.
Salute.
Okay, uh, we have a request to move the liquor control up in the meeting rather than leaving it till last, which I don't have an issue with. Um, are these the folks that are?
I believe so.
Okay. And, uh, so, uh, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, so entertain them, we will move, um, where is it? Number 10, right behind Citizen Input, and then we'll go there. So, all in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 17th as may be amended. And I did not have anything when I read them.
Yeah, it looked good to me.
So, I, I have a question, but not, but not a correction. On, uh, section 7B, at the end of it, it says the state of Vermont is already considering five to six percent increase, and then additionally it says CLA increase as high as 10 percent. Are those to be added together?
Yeah.
Or is the five to? This is just for clarification for people that are watching. I know we've already explained this.
Right, and then we just got the CLA, and it wasn't as bad, but it's next year, is it actually will be affected more because it runs a year behind?
Mm-hmm.
So, but the CLA is about, instead of 10 percent, is about one and a half, 1.8.
I just don't want any surprises.
No.
Out there.
No, and, but the five to six percent was what the state was predicting was gonna happen to the rate.
Yep, that's correct, right. Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes, uh, December 17th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, do you have any concerns, select board?
Uh, I do not.
I have a question. We had an issue a little while back about the sign for King's Pines on the access road?
Yes.
And we asked that they take it down, and I noticed today there's another sign up. Did they go through the permitting process?
No.
Or did they just stick it back up?
They must've just stuck it back up, 'cause I was not aware it even went up yet, because last I saw, there was just two posts sticking there.
I didn't see it yesterday. I saw it today.
Okay. I'll have to check on that again.
Okay. All right, that's the only thing that I have, that's, that's not on the agenda. Um, good evening. Do any of you have something that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. In that case, we will go to number 10, which is Board of Liquor Control, which we've moved up.
So, we have new business. Um, this is a first and third class liquidated transportation and an outside location. So, the Killeen Distillery, which is the operating out of the former Mountain Inn. Um, it's, uh, from what I can see, the, the owners are leasing the state, the Killeen Distillery, and they're releasing tax. So, they're, uh, as long as I've gone through the application to.
Okay.
So, now, even though, so this is something new, the third class, the LC is now requiring the town to approve those as well.
First and third.
First and third, and then, um, rules apply the same, the lease is attached, the diet, the, uh, the attic is attached, the, uh, floor plan, and I did outline the actual outside consumption area in yellow, and you identified it was in front of the building, and I believe the applicants, or the potential of the applicant associate is transferred to us.
Okay.
If, if you find it is acceptable, then make a motion.
Mm-hmm. When is this effective? Just a question.
This, this, this application is for this current year. So, this is for the current year, so they're, I'm sure planning to open before the end of the liquidation period, which is at April.
Okay. Uh, no, it's just that front room looks empty. One I drive by. Um, I, if you're good with it, I'm, I'm fine with it. Since you're the one that checks these out.
Yeah, I agree.
This is for, uh, Mountain Inn Distillery, uh, application.
Didn't they come in or?
No, they did not. So, we knew they were gonna be coming in.
Okay.
There is a lease document is attached behind the floor plan.
They're the owner of the building? They're the owner of the building.
So, you're, well, the owner of the building is leasing it to the Killeen Distillery, which is separate, in separate years.
But it's still the same owner.
Same owner.
Yes, that's our, that's our only rule. If it's a leased property, you have to have a letter from the owner, but if you're leasing it from the owner, you're the owner, right?
Yeah. So, uh, seeing nothing that needs to be changed, entertain a motion to have the, uh, town clerk sign off on the liquor permit. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we need to sign one of these somewhere? You probably have the page. Okay.
Because it's all brand new.
Yep. And make sure I sign the approved here. Sorry. We're so used to signing on the right, the right side is disapproved.
And then I just want to also, this brings your attention that we have two applications for special events for the Killeen event at Tyco, which is going to tell February 8th and 9th, and Teladega and Starex and Longsville Brewing Company have submitted applications. So, I, we'll sign those, those up. Okay? And then the next thing is, I just want, so every year, we submit a letter to the director of, uh, liquor control, asking for permission to do blanket authorization, so if you don't have to sign everything, we know that comes through. That's for, if a, if a motion, I sign, I, I sign them, after you have approved them. Um, so, it's a letter that I have to send to them every year to make sure that they approve us doing that in that manner, and if it's okay, we'll, we'll act over it.
You don't have a motion for that?
No, I don't have an issue with that. Okay. Um, we do need a motion for her to sign off on the other liquor permits, not the letter. There was a second batch.
The special events.
The special events.
Oh, you need that? That's not a catering?
I, I, no, it's not catering.
Okay, so I'm motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor of Jim's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, sorry you drove all this way.
No, no, we're all right. Thanks so much.
What do you plan on being open, if you?
Well, we'll do some soft opening for the hotel, probably, um, or late this month.
Okay.
And, uh, then the, uh, the bar and so forth, probably a month or so after that.
So, what, what are you making? I keep getting that, but a distillery, are you not saying?
I heard it was.
It's gonna be a variety.
I heard it was a variety.
Yeah, it is a variety.
Yeah.
Uh, vodka, gin.
Gin, vodka, whiskey, something wrong.
So, we'll wait like five to 10 years for the whiskey?
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Have a good one.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
It's like 30 days.
Uh, do you have the Brock request, or is someone coming in?
Well, they, they said they were gonna be here, but I have, uh, the Rick request.
Okay.
Brock Community Action, which is a benefit, they do, uh, they provide a food shelf, housing counseling, heating and utility assistance, assistance for Three Square Vermont, budget counseling, case management, resource and referral, income tax preparation, and a multitude of other things to assist with, uh, lower income families. Um, they're requesting that we add them to our appropriations list, uh, and put it on the ballot, uh, for a $500 appropriation.
This is the first time for them?
This is their first time.
Can I? What, I'm sorry, what did I do again?
It's all kinds of public assistance. It's, it's, uh, food shelf, it's heating assistance, they do, they run a lot of state programs, and they help the, the underprivileged.
I make a motion to put it on the, uh.
On the ballot.
Ballot. And run it up to the voters.
Yeah.
Right. Question? Okay. All in favor of the motion to put it on the ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The fun part, state education taxes.
Uh, the CLA and, and coefficient of dispersion have been forwarded by the state. One of the, the, the CLA has gone down another, just under 2 percent, um, which will add about a couple of cents to the, to the tax rate, um, because the, our, our houses are selling for more than their assessed value, so it's, it's modifying our rate with the state. So, there will be, uh, like a 1.8 percent increase to our, to our education tax rate. Uh, and the coefficient of dispersion is still standing in the 17 percent range, so hasn't changed much from last year. Uh, and the significance of those numbers are, if you get to 85 percent CLA, or if you get to 20 percent, uh, for the coefficient of dispersion, they trigger automatic, uh, reappraisals.
Mm-hmm.
So, we haven't changed very much from last year, so we're not at risk of that for this year. Next year may be a different story, because this year's been a different sales level, so we'll, we'll see how that tracks, but right now, we're still, uh, not needing to go to that level. And then, uh, the education tax increase line item, um, is based on the discussions we had at the last meeting, and I know the preliminary budgets, uh.
We're, we're working on the budget, we have another meeting, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with one of the finance people in Woodstock, but then we have another budget meeting on Friday morning. I mean, what we're saying here is, on the education tax increase, we have no control over the CLA. It, it's what the properties are selling. So, we're going to see, if the budget stays where it's at right now, we're going to see a point, um, 087 increase to the homestead tax rate, .095 to the, um, non-homestead tax rate. If we go prior, and this is the number that matters, if we go prior to the CLA, okay, we're seeing a .051 cent increase year over year, and that's just from the budget and, uh, you know, the, the additional 3.6 pers, 3.6 cents is because of the CLA. We're working on it, you know, we're trying to stay underneath that, um, excess spending amount. Right now, we're four dollars under. We don't like the dollars under the.
Four dollars?
The excess spending number was 18,0333 la, this current year, they moved it to 18,756. So, um, we're at like 18,751 and change, so, um, you know, there are a few people on the finance committee, uh, that don't feel comfortable, it's not just one, there's a few, that don't feel comfortable just being four dollars underneath, because we really don't know what's happening with the, um, insurance that the state just worked out with. They just sent the letter out, so they're not really sure of everything, and if the Vermont education, VHI, whatever, that, they may not have enough funds in there, and they may be coming in for a higher increase. Um, so, we're still working on it, we, we were talking at one point of trying to push out the date, but we can't, because what La Creche had pointed out was that, um, it was an articles agreement. We may come and try to change the articles agreement, because there's just so much, but we'll, we'll get back to you if we can do that at another date. Um, I mean, it's, you know, there, you're going to read, like, say, if we stick with this budget, you will read that says, in the paper probably, if Polly and Jason do the same way as last year, you will see conference taxes are gonna come down somewhere around eight or nine cents from this current year. So, but everybody starts at that 1.6241, it's just that their houses are selling for less than what they're on the ground. They went from 97 CLA to 105.46 CLA. So, you know, do you wanna be in a neighborhood that your house values are going down to get the lower tax rate on the CLA, or do you wanna be in a neighborhood that your taxes are going up? I mean, we all would like to stay neutral, right? But, so, 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 so that's it. We're all at the same, um, six cents, uh, 5.1 cent increase or whatever, without the CLA. It's tough. It's really tough.
Okay. So, we basically wait till things finalize.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing this board approves on.
Right.
This is just FYI stuff.
You know, I can give you, when we have our next meeting, I'll tell you where we're at.
Just putting it out there, right.
I mean, there are some, you know, there are some people calling for, we need to make cuts, 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 and then, my biggest concern is, is that, in our budget for the school, we're only putting in $150,000 for all schools in our district for capital repairs.
Right.
And, I agree, we should find savings in some areas, but those savings really need to be put back into taking care of our buildings if we wanna keep on going.
Right.
So, we'll get back to you on it.
Okay. Thank you. Budget review check?
Yep. Um, based on our conversation last time, I haven't changed anything in the budget. Their request was, you know, we have tomorrow night the, the meeting regarding the zoning amendments, um, and the rental registration program, so I was asked to look at the tax rate implications if that were to go into effect, and how would that affect things? Um, just in this column, you can see I have the budget without the re, the registrations. This is the current budget that, that we were talking about the last time. Uh, it's 4.8 million dollars with 956,000 dollars in non-tax revenue, and includes 120,000 dollars of carryover. We're carrying over just the same amount we did last year to help reduce taxes.
Right.
Which leaves us a, a budget of what we have to raise by taxes of 3.81 million dollars. Uh, and looking at our grant list, at current grant list, 7,838,921, that would be a tax rate of 48 cents, 48.61. Uh, last year was 46.55, so it's about 1.9.
Mm-hmm.
When we did last year's, uh, expectation of what the tax rate was gonna look like, we proposed, we had, in the plan, it showed about a 2.7, so we're about .8, .9 under what we anticipated, uh, last year with the changes. So, we're, we're on track there. Uh, if we look at the rental registration and remember, uh, and I gave, I also provided a, the worksheet that we did for the budget for the, for the, uh, short-term rentals, um, and the top line, you talk about the full-time planner. The, right now, we have $64,000 in the budget we just looked at, uh, which was the, the previous planner, uh, budget number. He's currently working at halftime. If we were to implement this program, we would be going to full-time, um, and if you add all of those pieces in, um, including the, the host compliance, which is just one we have an example of, we're not talking about going into that level till we know whether or not we're gonna make the changes to the zoning, I see a potential, uh, expense of 151,000 dollars. If we used the $200 registration fee, that would leave a net of about 40, $34,000 for contingencies, uh, which is about 15, 20 percent. Um, if you make that change, and we go to the budget, it would drop the tax rate from 4.4861 to 4.4776. So, with making those modifications to the budget, so if we did implement that, and we had a little bit of net, there would be a, a slight benefit to the budget tax rate. And basically, I guess the question I have, the, as the budget's drawn, it does not have those pieces in the actual numbers at the top, the 186,000 would go into the, uh, planning, uh, expense line item, we currently have $10,000 in that line item, um, and that is under...
It's found on the right, in the right page.
It's under, well, zoning fees would be the, the amount we take in.
Mm-hmm.
The zoning fees on the revenue, which is on the front page, which is 10,000, would become 196,000, 'cause we'd be adding, uh, 100, we'd be adding 182,000 from the fees.
The town planner.
And then the town planner would have, and a planning assistant would have money added to it, we've already added the money in for the salaries, and then, under the dues, I would be adding a number, instead of 200, it would go up by the number that's in, uh, in here, which is like 70-something thousand dollars for the, for the service we'd be hiring. Just as a placeholder, but those were the areas that would be affected if we added those line items to the budget, and my question to the board is, do we want to include that in there? And knowing we won't be, we won't be talking about approving the budget till, the final budget till the 21st, at least, um, after the, we have the hearing tomorrow night, but just didn't know if we want to include that in there, or if I wait to see what the, what the result of tomorrow's meeting, and then, is the, whether you want to include that, those numbers in the budget.
Well, tomorrow's meeting's gonna be, hopefully, they have to make a recommendation.
Right.
And we either accept their recommendations or make changes to the recommendation.
Right.
At the end, it comes down to this table here.
Right.
So, I had asked Jeff to really run this, you know, um, I mean, we already have the, the planner for full-time in here at the full, in the budget, so this other part here of saying 32,000, I mean, it's, we don't really have the 32,000 in the current budget.
No, the 32,000 is, actually, the 119 is what's not in the budget. The 32 I put there at the bottom, only so that you could tell, oh, you're talking about the 32.
I'm looking, I'm looking at page four of the budget. FY21.
Right. Okay.
You know, so that's, that's, that's what we're.
Yep.
And then there, we have $64,000 for the town planner, zoning administrator.
Right.
We don't have $32,000 on there.
No.
So, that's why I was getting at that.
Yeah.
We already have the, so if we, if, if for some reason we don't go with this, we already have the 64,000 in, so.
Right.
You know, I, I think we just add these line items like you have it over here, with and without, for now, and wait for the recommendation, and then for us to have that discussion there. I don't think we add in, and I ask you for this, but I don't think we add in the .0085 difference, because we don't know if this will, um, distract some people from signing up.
Right.
You know, they may not register, so we don't know the real income, I mean, we'll probably get 90 percent of them doing it or whatever, but you may get some folks that say no.
And that, and that's the reason, I, there's the cushion in there, you know, because this is, this is assuming all 931 register.
Right.
And if you end up with 875, it's gonna take the revenue down.
Right.
But also, um, it, almost proportionately, the rates modify by the number, like, the, the way it's, the way the billing goes is by the, by the number of people that apply.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I would say that we keep it like you have here, but instead of adding in, we have time, but we have to put the budget forward. I wouldn't put into the saving on the tax rate, it will save, if everyone signs up, I was thinking about this, coming over here, if everyone signs up, then it will be the, it will build, and then the following year, we'll have that to add to, like, you have the 120 at the end.
Right.
So, you would have one, you know, if you keep on running at 120, then we might have 155, 156.
Right.
You know, I, I, I still think it's something we need to do.
Well, and the question is just whether we show it in the budget, or do we leave it, because the other, the other way to do it is to just go with the regular budget and add the line items in as non-budgeted items, because the whole intent is that this is gonna be self, self-funding, and if we do that, we can actually say, well, we're gonna add the revenue to this section and put the other line items in as expense, and it'll just show a net for tracking purposes. So, we can, we don't even have to show it as a budget item, it'll, it'll happen in the actuals.
Right.
But at this time, I'd rather not put out a final budget number till we know what they're gonna do.
Well, the question is, is do we even wanna consider this, because you might wanna just stay with the regular budget, like I said, and add it in just in the actuals. That would be a choice.
When do we set the, the tax rate? Remind me. We don't set the tax rate, the end of June.
Right.
So, so, we're gonna know by the end of June if, you know, you're running a tax rate now of .4861, right?
Yeah.
And then we're gonna know registration, if this thing gets going on, and then you'll have those numbers for us.
Right.
By the end of June, and then, that's when we set the tax rate.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then you technically could reduce it at that point.
Right.
Yeah, but, and so, from my perspective, then, we're talking about leaving the budget that's gonna be on the ballot as the primary with the number that's, it's the 4,887,077 with these adjustments, and, and just go with the primary budget.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with us voting in people or mayors saying if we went with this, without going to the voters, to say it's, it's, it's neutral? We can?
It's, it's not a, it's really not a budget item, it's not an expense, we're not, it's not an additional expense, because we are, we're adding it later, it's a zoning change, and we're just going to track.
Okay.
How it processes, it processes.
Okay, good with that.
Yeah, and we need planning and zoning to both approve it before we can do it.
But I just wanted to see the number that it would.
Yeah, and so, that's, and that's what it is, just so we, we can look at it.
And we can, we can attack that in June when we set the tax rate.
And if we get numbers before it, we can do it before it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, setting the rate is June, but we can know what we're doing before that.
Right.
Once these things start happening.
And to be honest with you, I don't know that I would set the tax rate based on it, because, based on the conversations we've had, if we implement this, you're gonna be implementing it probably not to start the registration process till July 1, and it'll have till like.
But you have the following year.
So, we won't even know how, how many people are gonna register at that point.
Until the following budget.
Till the following budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So, I'm, I, I might just leave it as, we'll let it, we'll let it operate, and we'll see how it does.
Because any funds coming in is in July anyway, and that's our new year.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's.
So, we'll present it the way it is right now.
That's what we're working on, but it, the thing is, we would just set it up as a tracking mechanism, almost like the option stacks, we'll see how it does.
Okay. Okay.
So, other than that, I think, um, we're on target for where we expected to be last year with this year. I don't, there hasn't been any major changes, uh, we are properly still funding our capital expenses, we have not reduced it, we've met, met the same numbers.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I don't know, when do you wanna finally approve the budget, but if we say that the budget numbers here are the ones we're going to use, we can then start putting together our book, which would make my favorite librarian extremely.
We're having our next meeting.
The 21st.
Yeah, you leave this early than that.
Well, it just, I, we, I can leave until then, but I'm trying to get as much as I can into the.
It's between 30 and 40 days of when the vote is.
Well, we, yeah, we actually can't warn the meeting until like the 25th or something like that. It's like something like, it's, 'cause it's no less than 30 or no more than 40.
Yeah.
For the warning, and we still have to approve everything else.
Yeah.
So.
So, since we have on the agenda, and it says budget review, and it says final draft, and a draft is just a draft, I would say that we're good with this, we can include just one in the meeting saying for the next meeting.
Okay.
For, for.
And if we get to, if we get to where we.
This is final draft, to see if we wanna change anything, and this.
In case anyone starts seeing and says.
Well, we'll look, when I look at the schedule, the only thing I'm, I may request is a, a special meeting just to finalize, just to say we're approving this budget ahead of time, so we can get that done, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, we're good at this point right now.
All right, so those are the numbers.
Okay. Um, just that reminded me of something that, again, it's not a correction, it's a clarification. Um, number 10 in the minutes, the second S, A, said, "The need for temporary gap loans were being eliminated." Should we clarify that with the fact that we're reducing those gap loans at this point? We're not eliminating them?
No, the intent is, this year, we don't expect to have one.
The intent.
We don't, we do not expect to have one.
Yeah.
Unless something dramatic happens. As it stands right now, once I hear, once I hear that the, all the bonds.
I'm just saying intent, yeah, okay.
Once I hear the bond things are all set, which will be over the next few weeks, then we will know we will not need it because we will have funded the, the old FEMA stuff and we'll be done with that and we'll have enough cash to get through.
Again, it's just clarification of.
And yeah, eliminated is a strong word, but it's most, 99%, how's that?
Okay.
Just never, I don't like absolutes.
You don't like absolute?
Well, that's a separate.
Well, if we have to get one, I would just say it will be a non-temporary, it will be a permanent.
Well, that was my point about how we're, we're reducing it.
I wasn't here for reading other minutes, but I think that's a, you never know what's gonna happen.
Yeah. I mean, I just, yeah.
But that's what we'll say, so.
Okay, thank you.
We don't, we do not expect any, this will be the first time, I believe, since, since the Irene thing, that we will not need a summertime operating note.
And that was one of the targets. Okay. Managers report, department?
Actually, I don't have anything special to report, unfortunately. We have things that are happening that we're gonna be discussing later that are not for public consumption at this point.
What about the lights, how are we doing? I haven't been up and down the roads.
Which lights?
On Long Lake Killington Road, on the side.
Well, they fixed a bunch of them and then they had.
They were on when I came down.
Some of them, some of, we had like five or six that actually the, the light source died, not, not, it's not the system. The system is fixed.
Yeah.
And they were getting light sources.
What's the light source, the electricity?
Well, no, it's the bulb, it's not really a bulb anymore because they're LEDs and it's a, it's a different kind of fixture, so they're just trying to find the compatible. It's not like putting in a bulb, which is the unfortunate part about a lot of LED fixtures now.
Since I wasn't here, or I got here late, sorry, but coming up to Killington Road, now just, I think it's just short, maybe it's just past Anthony Way, there's like a four-inch gap in the pavement. It's down deep and it's supposed to be like 57 degrees out on Saturday. I know it's raining. I mean, it's, has anyone driven up to Killington Road and seen that big hole that's in the right-hand side of the road?
Is that the one I drove through? Yeah.
Where is it?
It's a Killington Road.
Yeah.
I, I think it's.
After Anthony Way?
I think it's after Anthony Way.
And there's a culvert right there and I think there's a spot there.
It's about this long and it's about that wide.
Yep.
And it's about that deep.
Yep.
Well, I didn't notice.
It's lined up right for your right tire if you don't move over.
Yeah, no, well, the goal will be when we have, we'll have that warmer weather, we'll drop a couple, little bit of cold patch in.
Yeah, you know, that's all.
Well, there's also one coming down right below.
The one, the one that's coming down is a whole different problem.
I know it's a different problem.
It is actually something that we may actually have to dig up the road in that location. Where that, where that little, there's a hole, it's about 12 inches round that keeps dropping and we filled it probably 15 times. The only thing, I remember when we replaced the culvert that's near the woods, there, the sewer line, the sewer line runs right along there and it intersects right about at that spot. And that sewer line had, and I don't know what the reason is, had a lot of water running right underneath the pipe, so it must be a gap spot where things are channeling and through the ledge. And the only thing I can assume is that something washed out right there. So we may actually have to dig that one up and, and put some concrete or something in there to firm that up down deep. But that one has, that just keeps going into nowhere.
You're not doing that this next little warm spot.
We can't do that now.
No, 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 no.
But if we can get that cold patch, I mean, that's, it's pretty bad.
No, we'll, we can get that.
Okay. Do we have, we've already done liquor control, other business? Anyone? No? Any of you, other business? No? Okay. We do have a need for executive session tonight, so entertain a motion at.
Are we going in for personnel?
It's personnel.
Okay. And. Throw in legal too. Personnel.
We have legal?
Yeah, I got something.
Okay. Entertain a motion to go in at, is that 7:04 or 14? I can't read 04.
7:04.
7:04 for executive session. Thank you all.